Okay, welcome tonight at our fifth public hearing for the our novo project. Which let me just quickly read, which is novo Riverside comments L P for comprehensive agreement pursuant to MGL chapter forty B paragraphs twenty to twenty-three for a two hundred and one unit multifamily development. At two ninety-two and two ninety-four Baker Avenue parcel three seven four nine dash one, which is a ten acre portion of the real property known and numbered as three hundred and three hundred and ten Baker Avenue. And as I said, welcome, welcome all here tonight. As said, it's the fifth public hearing. We are hoping that we are wrapping up some items tonight. And then go in have another hearing on March twenty-sixth, which will be virtual. There will be discussion on potentially any any wrap-up items, any leftovers that we need to discuss or talk about, but otherwise it will be discussing waivers. And conditions at that at that meeting, that hearing also will will be closing the public hearing section of this this process. And then we will at our regular April meeting, April eleventh, we will then vote on the application. So tonight we have on the just want to introduce everybody. It's Thomas Wayne, Ravi Vahia, Elizabeth Akerhus Moore and myself are present here in in the meeting room. Elizabeth Dwyer Leonard is remote, so she she will be chiming in remotely. And from the other people from the town or that are helping us tonight is Elizabeth Hughes, who's here. We have our town council, Kristen Gavellis is is online and our forty B consultant Judy Barrett is online. And you also actually have Cliff Boomer on the line. I think I saw him online. Yep, there he is. As our architectural peer review consultant. We we have made a couple of changes. This is some few housekeeping items here. We have made a couple of changes to how on to how people, the remote people can access this. We will, we will stay in control of who we unmute and mute. That will be done by either Elizabeth or myself. We we will keep a really close lit when you, when you talk, when you get, when you are recognized to speak and when we unmute you. You will need to to state your name and your address very clearly. If we have any doubt of the the correctness of your name and your address, we will mute you and we will we've, we will double check whether you name, you stated name and address is correct. And we also one, and this is, this is sort of a pre-warning, if you if you are recognized and you staying not on topic, we we will give you thirty seconds to make your, to make your point, then at the board's discretion, we can give you a longer time. But if you within the thirty seconds are not convincing the board that your what you want to talk about is important to this project. We will take that as, we will take that information, that thirty seconds worth of information and and we will just then cut it off. That's just a little bit, bit of housekeeping that we unfortunately have been forced to implement. Anyway, tonight's meeting, I think we have wrap up, as I said, then as maybe some moves ends, we can start talking discussions within between the board of some, some sort of general items. But the the main wrap-up tonight is architecture and traffic. And I, I know Kevin is not here. Is Kevin remote?
Oh, Kevin's iPad.
Kevin's iPad. Well, is that, is that off Kevin?
I believe so.
Okay, so and because I think then Kevin might want to, right, kick it off.
He's going to have some introductory remarks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Kevin Hurley. I'm a land planner working for Taurus, the applicant. I live at twenty-five Lang Street. I just want to make a couple of brief comments about both the architecture and the Main Street intersection. Many of you know, we've had three working sessions on the architecture. At the second, I really attended that second meeting to listen. And what I heard at the second worst working session was that the Board of Appeals was still unsatisfied with the massing of the building at two ninety-two. They questioned why we again, why we didn't consider six stories at two ninety-four. And the town's peer review consultant showed us a number of slides that his firm had worked on. And in those slides, he showed an example of how his firm, in a similar situation, had removed a portion of the first floor to open the front of the building to the back of the building. Following that meeting and before the last working session, Taurus decided to make some substantial changes in the architecture. Those changes will result in moving fourteen units from the building at two ninety-two, the building closest to Baker Ave, to the back building, building two ninety-four, by adding a sixth floor to the building at two ninety-four. The building at two ninety-two, in the center of it, will have four units removed, which will open the east side of the building to the west side of the building. Above the east side units where the four are being eliminated, on the four floors above that, were also removed two units. Essentially, that means that there'll be a fifty-seven foot wide opening that's thirty feet deep in the easterly elevation of two ninety-two. The last thing that we're doing is on the front of two ninety-two, the portion that faces Baker Ave. Where, Michelle, if you could just twist that. I assume that, or whoever put that up. So on the front of two ninety-two, we are taking the building and reducing it from five stories to two stories by carving out the two units that were on the fifth floor. There's going to be a number of costs associated with moving the fourteen units to the back building at two ninety-four. And those costs, we estimate, we don't have an actual cost, but we estimate that they'll be in the neighborhood of four to five hundred thousand dollars more for the project, because the first floor at two ninety-four has to be built with combustible materials. Taurus is willing to absorb those additional costs. In addition, I said I was going to mention the intersection of Main Street and Baker Ave. And at the last architectural meeting, we indicated to the board members that were present that Taurus will contribute a hundred thousand dollars towards the town's design and work that is being undertaken at the intersection of Baker Ave and Main Street. With those brief comments, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Michelle. And Michelle will walk you through the details of what I just outlined. Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to re-let a lot of what Kevin already said, but probably in a different order. So thanks for paying for keeping track. But to Kevin's point, we'd like to thank Cliff Boomer at Davis for Architects for working with the town and with Taurus over the last few months in the peer review process. We had three informal reviews together and worked through some of the positives of the project as well, and some areas that could definitely be improved. So as Kevin mentioned, one of the biggest concern that the town had with the project that that he saw as well is that the project could benefit from being two ninety-two specifically could benefit from being reduced in size and scale and density. That's in terms of length, in terms of massing, perceived coloring, design. And so we've explored a lot of those options and since we presented last two, which was in November. And so we have four primary revisions to the design approach. Up on the screen here, I have a, this is a sketch. It's it's still a working draft. We're working on creating formalized plans for resubmission towards the end of the month. But this is an updated site plan that starts to articulate some of these improvements in the site plan design. So while they're architectural in nature, they really do provide an advantage with a site plan. The two they're not quite rectangles, but the two pork chops at both the the upper end of two ninety-four in this plan and the lower end of two ninety-two in this plan are where Kevin was alluding to some changes at the top floor and as well as a break in the middle of two ninety-two. So in this image, we're calling it two ninety-two north and two ninety-two south, just just for clarity sake are some of the the proposed changes, which we'll look at in more detail. So just to click back and forth, the old proposed plan had two ninety-two and two ninety-four, both as continuous five-story buildings with no break at two ninety-two and no setback at the top of two ninety-four. So a little bit of a sketch there, just to show you the difference. This is an enlarged landscape plan, which is a very high-level sketch that Hawk Design has worked with Taurus on developing at that break of two ninety-two. They have a little bit of work left to do in terms of actually designing the space. But what we really wanted to represent in this diagram is to Kevin's point is one of the perceived improvements here would be to break two ninety-two in the middle for the benefit of the pedestrians walking through the project, as well as any bikers riding through the project or cars driving through the project. And so what we see here in in sort of orientation is the pond is at the north side of the image. And we're sort of seeing an enlarged piece of two ninety-two right in the middle. At the upper part of the enlarged plan, which I'll try to show with my mouth, is sort of this red and deep green coloration. That portion of the project is actually a covered outdoor terrace. So essentially a three-season occupiable amenity for the residents of the project that will have a railing that over, so you can overlook out into the pond area and the amenitized landscape. On the southern portion of the building plan here in the light green will be open to the sky. So that's open all the way up to the sky from the roof of the parking through the top of the roof. And we have three D images of this later. This space will be accessed from both ends of the residential building at the first floor, as well as it will connect with an accessible path from the sidewalk at the driveway up to this level. So it becomes an opportunity for pedestrians to enter two ninety-two at the midpoint of the building, as well as an opportunity for passersby to see through the building and gain some more curiosity in the site. And the, we did review with Davis for Architects, the primary entries of both buildings and the circulation within the buildings in this site. And and Cliff was in agreement with our plan, but did recommend that we revisit the opportunity to provide additional entries to two ninety-two for the people leaving the site to walk a dog or ride a bike or to get to their car that might be parked outside. So that's something we were able to provide here. Earlier conversations, we talked a little bit about security. These new access doors would be securely locked, so they would be accessed by residents, but not your passersby. They also provide fire regress from the building itself. And so we're going to look at a few three D images right now. And so the image I pulled up on screen first is the conceptual rendering that you all have seen to date for two ninety-two Baker. I bring this up because we're, we're changing graphic styles a little bit. And I just want to show you the difference between the graphic style you've seen and the graphic that we're going to show next. So the old rendering was created to be photorealistic. But the images we'll use tonight of the updated design are working images of our architectural model. So the graphics are a little bit different. I'll click back and forth. The design is essentially the same in these two images. It just looks a little bit different. We also do not model all of the landscape in detail in three D land because it is very tricky to get right. And it doesn't provide a huge amount of benefit when we know that we're going to get to that photorealistic rendering quality, which we will do on this project, but we didn't want to do it personally. So the the old images on the screen of the project we looked at in December, the massing was intentionally continuous. It was modern. The balconies jumped along the facade of the building in sort of a randomized way. And we were using these warm patches of this wood chong material and and blocks of green at the recessed balconies to provide activation of the facades. Well, we've sort of drastically revisited that architectural approach and added a new series of architectural languages to the building. In addition to the pass-through that Kevin mentioned at the middle of two ninety-two at the first floor, we've also added a break along the length of two ninety-two. This is, I mentioned this briefly, we added a break in two ninety-two facing the dry the driveway and the parking that is clear, continuous from the first flare up through the parapet. So this is still a continuous building footprint. We can, we'll look at the floor plans in just a couple of slides to see how that works. But what we get is the benefit of seeing two distinct building massings along the driveway from both ends as you drive past the site on Baker Ave only and doesn't continue into the site. Whether you live here or you work in the office building or you're visiting another building on the property. So we create that break right in the middle of the building that helps with the massing, the perceived scale and it improves the the overall appeal of the project. The architectural language, I talked to a little bit. So the, we maintained the cool white and gray proposed color scheme on parts of the project, but added a new sort of neutral color palette as well, which you can see on sort of the front end of two ninety-two here. It's it's tonal in beige and tan and sort of a more, is in a warmer, neutral way. At the front here, you can also see where those two units at the top floor have been cut back. And that sort of really reduces the impact of this building on the public way. And to reinforce that setback, even though the building is maintained as five stories beyond that setback, we're treating the top floor differently here. A cool gray with not a lot of detailing to sort of reinforce that setback that happens at the street level. If we look at it from a little bit farther away, almost exactly the same view, you can see that, you know, even if you back up a little bit on the street as if you're, you're driving through the site, you still really get the benefit of that break. The parapet heights on both projects have been changed, so the front building is a little bit taller, the back building, using our quotes, two ninety-two north is a little bit shorter. And that works really well to differentiate the project. In this view, we clipped it in here slightly. If you look in the tiny back corner, you can actually see two ninety-four a little bit back here at its new six-story height. So even from the street at six stories, it's it's still pretty demure, since it is so far away from that, from that public realm. We have a view of that more closely as well. One of the other things we changed about the architectural language as we were relooking at these new massings was took a different approach to the balconies. As I mentioned before, we were intentionally moving them around a little randomly on the on the previous design. Here we've changed to a much more static balcony approach. They're both good designs, but here we really liked this approach because it creates more of an intentional rhythm and repetition that does feel a little bit more conquer, a little bit more residential in its styling. So it it does a lot of the same things, but just in a different orientation. And so here we're going to look at the floor plan of the first floor for a quick minute before we look at one more three D view of two ninety-two. So we're oriented again with the pond at the top of the page. This plan hasn't changed drastically since we've seen it last in terms of programming. We're still a double-loaded residential corridor project. And the orange box on the left is still the primary project entry leasing space, nail package for this project, lounge and work from home space. But right in the middle of the building, you can see where that new break in the landscape, where the landscaping is brought into the footprint of the building. And it actually provides a new, as I called it, sort of three-season terrace amenity for the residents of the project with those two new residential door opportunities at this level as well. And so if we take a three D view of this new sort of pass-through area, again, almost no landscaping in this architectural model. But you can see in sort of the more closer perspective, how those two buildings are going to feel or those two building masses, two ninety-two south to the left and two ninety-two north to the right are going to feel when when you're sort of standing in that parking area, looking through that outdoor terrace out into the pond and the landscape beyond the pond. So the ramp here will be amenitized with handicap accessible railings, which probably aren't modeled correctly. And some a set of stairs to get up there as well. And you can see some of the architectural detailing on the left and the right side of this new design feature are similar. We don't want this building to feel too different in its in its ends. We definitely want it to feel related, but provide the relief that that's being asked for. Another thing that that some of the board members brought up in some of our conversations was a concern that this building is very long. And so what this also provides us an opportunity for is to get natural light into the residential corridors. So in the three D image that we looked at a second ago, all of the windows in this gray material in the middle are actually windows that are clung into the residential corridors on floors two, three, four, and five. So midway in this, in this quarter, all of the residents on this floor have the opportunity for that natural light, that vitamin D. If they're passing from their unit down to get their mail, or work in the work from home space. This floor plan is the top floor plan, but that will happen on all four, all five, four upper floors. And so on the left side of this page is that low roof that you can now see from Baker Avenue that sort of stacked directly above the amenity space. And so now we'll take a quick look at two ninety-four. And so again, this is the rendering that you all have seen in December and previously for the two ninety-four language. We've taken a look at two ninety-two and two ninety-four as more distinct buildings than we have previously proposed. A lot of the same material palette and concept with how the buildings are gone, are gone together, but treating them a little bit differently. So the twelve, fourteen units that we relocated from two ninety-two have been added as a new sixth floor to two ninety-four, which is coming on screen. So this view, we actually are turning around and looking at the building at its front door. The previous re-rendering was kind of looking at the building on the backside with its relationship to the pond. But this view is looking at the building's front door, the drop-off area in front of that. And you, so you can sort of see two ninety-two in the background of this image on the left. So we've taken the same approach here, but applied it to to a little bit different massing. So we're using the one neutral color palette sort of in the foreground here and the cool neutral palette sort of in the building leg on the right after the break. And even though this building doesn't have a physical break in it, the way two ninety-two does, we're using the same articulation and creating a visual stacked element in the middle of the building where we have that natural bend that follows the landscape to break those two neutral palettes, the warm neutral and the full neutral, and break down the massing from this view as well. Here at the the front of two ninety-four, we have the five-story portion of the building. And you can see that that sixth floor is set back here. So we're got a little bit more relief from the three hundred Baker project, which is actually just out of screen left here. Which we can't see at this moment. And so for the the two ninety-four floor plans, the typical floor plan is essentially unchanged. So we're not going to spend too much time on it. And then the two ninety-four top floor, you can see where we provided that low roof area to set back the perceived height of this building from three hundred Baker and and from within the site. So we're happy with with the changes that we've made. We we agree with Cliff and the board members that this does provide a little bit more of a consistent massing approach with between two ninety-two and two ninety-four. The massing is broken down in sort of more transitional, traditional ways than the the modern approaches that we were providing. And and we're pretty happy with where it's gone. There's a summary here on screen where we have two hundred and one units still. And we actually have the same unit mix that we provided in December. So that's eighty-one one bedrooms, ninety-nine two bedrooms and twenty-one three bedrooms. That's still the two hundred and one unit count. And the parking inside of those buildings has remained unchanged. And that's it. Thank you for lending.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's a wonderful update, wonderful modifications. But I think before, I think before I let the board comment, I think I want to call on Cliff Boomer and see whether he has any additional comments here. Cliff?
Hi, I'm Cliff Boomer. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Hi, I'm the peer reviewer for the town. And we've, as has been noted, we've had several working sessions. The last one was a little bit less than two weeks ago. I think it was the twenty-eighth of February. And I I think that what, I don't think, I know what I've seen has been some significant changes in the design of the building. And I think a lot of it stemmed from comments the board has made about you know, kind of indirectly about the challenges of placing a residential building in a largely commercial context. And I think the the initial designs were really more married to that commercial context than thinking about the residential use and the amenity, the both the onsite amenities relating to the onsite amenities and of course nearby community walkable distance and all altogether, the challenge of figuring out how you plant a residential structure in that kind of context. And I think the adaptations that have been made with the design and keeping the same unit count, which I think is admirable, given the need for affordable housing. I think that through distribute redistribution of the massing, working with materials, certainly breaking up the scale of the long length of the building and in in several ways, really adapting the building to the specific site, particularly on the pond side of the site. So I'm very supportive of the changes I've seen. I think the adaptations include the front, the front face of the building on Baker. That was important. I think making those kinds of changes really significantly helped the project. So I'm feeling it is moved in a, in a really good direction, both from the perspective of the public, but also the residents who live in the building. I think the project architect has really pointed out the advantages of breaking up long corridors by introducing natural light. And the notion of removing a very large piece of the building, the entire height of it at two ninety-two is significant and really I'm very supportive of the changes. I think the and I'm appreciative that they moved into a software that is an architectural software that's really more friendly towards really looking at ideas rather than getting locked on something and then going directly to a realistic rendering. I think that that in and of itself shows really a receptiveness to criticism and a willingness to make what are significant changes. Really a receptiveness to criticism and willingness to make what are significant changes. Similarly, I think focusing on site plan issues, really tying the building to the site. And increasing the connectivity across the site is, was the right thing to do before digging into floor plans. I'm sure there is some discussions, some further discussions about some of the floor plan decisions. I think the only one that really comes to mind for me, and it's only because it's parallel with. The select, some select board comments, I think the select board recommended bicycle parking. At a ratio of one to five. Personally, I think given the location of this building and the, and the community, you know, the larger community that it's sided within. I would advocate more for a one to one protected indoor parking space ratio. Connected with of course, sufficient parking for visitors to the building. And that's really the approach to sustainability is impressive. Actually going way beyond most buildings that we see built these days, particularly with the. Immigration of the geothermal system. And I do want to support the, the contention that this, these kinds of changes added costs. They truly do because the 294 really did have to change the construction type. In order to redistribute the massing. And I appreciate that they were willing to do that at this point in the process. So I, that's, that's what I have to say. I'm certainly here to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thanks, thanks Cliff. That was, that was very helpful. Next, I would like to go to Elizabeth Dwyer Leonard, who was part of all the. Architectural workshop meeting. So Elizabeth, you want to say something?
Yes, great. Thank you. And I'm actually calling in from vacation with my family because. I really wanted to take the time to say that I think the architectural improvements are really, really good. I looked at the building with, and I'm sorry about the noise here. I looked at the building with the eye of what would it be like to be a person living there, especially someone raising children. And the, the way that you can now go underneath the 292 building. Seems like a really big powerful change that you're not sort of stuck on one side or the other of it. And then also the, the windows that will be in where, in that same gap. It just seems incredible, like that all of a sudden went from being really institutional. And you know, you just imagine someone going to the elevator in the morning that's kind of duh, 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 duh. You know, with a kind of institutional lighting. But then now with natural light, it just seems like a completely different experience. And so I just want to say that I really appreciate what the architect was able to do. And I appreciate that there's additional expense. And so anyways, that's why you're hearing from me from vacation. I was really impressive to see the journey. So that's, that's what I have.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Thanks for those comments. Now turning to board members sitting here. And see whether they have any comments, questions.
Yeah, I'd echo what everyone says. I really appreciate all the work. The vision that I had in my head that maybe I couldn't completely articulate of going through the 292. So you could see through to the, to the pond. You guys did a great job. The articulation of the building, it feels less massive. I like what you've done with the materials, with the colors. I think it's all great improvements, but I hope you're not too unhappy with it. Maybe even happy with it. And thank you Cliff for, for helping out with all of that.
Yeah. You guys' comments?
I, I agree. I had always thought it made more sense to put some of the massing on the back building instead of front building. And I think it's turned out really well. And again, I appreciate that the applicant is, is willing to. Increase the budget to do that. I guess one question with the, with the low roof kind of cut out on top there. Is there any opportunity for like a roof terrace or anything there? Or is it maybe a little too high up and ruined the view from the street?
Absolutely. It's, it's definitely a question that we revisit it. It's something that we go back and forth on in these types of projects. Honestly, we can look at it again. But I think part of why we didn't do it is that we are trying to reduce perceived height. And if we were to put a space up there, we'd want to shade it. Having the height back on. So we really were.
I, I, I assumed you thought about it. That's all that matters. I don't feel strongly that there needs to be anything there.
Well, thanks, Bill.
I don't have any add. I agree with what's, it's great improvements. I like it.
Yeah, no, same, same here. Same, same here, right? You know, and it's kind of like, you know. All board members had sort of one item that they were really focused, not really focused on, but that, that, that was, was important to them. You know, you had the height of the, the back building for you that, you know, you wanted the opening. The light in the corridor for, yeah, Elizabeth, you know, and that all sort of. That all got sort of taken care of, all got done. And I think the architecture looks really good. Michelle, thank you so much. That was, well, well done. So. Yeah, I, I concur with everybody has said that, that it's, it's a massive, massive improvement. So. Let's just see whether we can sort of, I think wrapping up architecture with some comments. Just questions from, or comments from the public or anybody. Seeing none, then. No, no comments there. So then. I think.
I'm sorry, to the bike storage.
Yeah, that was sort of like, I, it, it feels like that we sort of come, come to a conclusion about the, the architecture and then that's now me. Only doing some drawings now on the show. So thank, thank you for that. But indeed Cliff had a comment about bike storage. And you know, can we, or Kevin, maybe, can somebody respond to that? Do we know where we are? And if you, if, if you don't have a response on how much bike stor- storage at that, we can punt on that as well till. Till our next meeting, if that's, if that's easier.
We can.
Do you have the numbers now, what we currently have designed?
We have designed for the one to five as recommended from the select board. After our first informal meeting with Cliff, we did go back and study adding a few more. I don't have the numbers right in front of me. We did not get to one to one, but we can have those numbers in a follow up.
Yeah, yeah. So that we, we have them. I think, I think that would be good. But if you're, and if the fact that you're increasing, I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good mark. So. All right, we have one, one audience member who has a question. So. Pamela Gritt, let's see whether we can unmute. Yep. Can we? Yep. Hang on, hang on. You're still muted. Now you're unmuted.
Thank you. Pamela Gritt, 13 Concord Green. I apologize if this question is no longer applicable, but I just wanted to find out if you had. Changed the design to exclude artificial turf in any forms.
Well, we, we, um, we, we were going to come to that later. But I'll give you a short answer and the short answer is yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Good, good. Traffic? I saw Randy on the line. Is there any, any other updates on traffic? We got GPI comment letter back this afternoon from our peer review consultant. This, they, that was forwarded to them as well. So good. And.
It was received by us. And I think we essentially don't have really any comments. We, we think that it, it pretty much closes everything out. And GPI had proposed some proposed conditions. And so, you know, we'll look once the board gives a draft, just to make sure that they're put in the right timing perspective. But I, I think that addresses everything. Randy is here though, if the board has any, or he should be virtually here. Should the, should the board members have any specific questions from Randy?
Yeah, no, I, I read the letter and I, I, I concur with you that there wasn't. It pretty much closes out everything related to traffic. There was a bunch of conditions or that GPI suggested as conditions. And we'll, you know, we'll, we'll work through those. And you know, since we only got it this afternoon, I, I sort of kind of skimmed it. But it didn't look like there was any, any, any heavy lifting in those, those conditions. But you know, when Randy, you know, looks at it from a different perspective and he might have different. Might have a different opinion on them, but we'll, we'll hear that on the next hearing. But I think the most important thing about traffic is, and you know, I, I. What Kevin mentioned earlier is that the contribution. That you, that the applicant is proposing to the construction and the improvements of the Baker Avenue Main Street. Intersection. I, I, I'd like to just thank you for doing that. That is much appreciated. I think that is something that is very meaningful for the boroughs, for the people that live in the area, for the people of West Concord. That there is something done for them. That's, that really is, I think is meaningful, is powerful. So thank you. Thank you so much for doing it.
Elizabeth, are you able to give us? Synopsis of what is anticipated the town will be doing at Main Street, Baker Avenue, Cotty Street, et cetera? Because we've heard a lot of discussions in our meetings, but is that going to, something is going to happen this year or next year? Or do we know?
I do not know the specifics of that project, but I will find out tomorrow from engineering and inform the board. And I don't even know if they have. Plans up on their website yet or studies. So I will, I will figure that out and inform the board.
No, and I, I'm adding to that. I saw. A plan at least two months ago now that they were still working on. But it's a bit of a reconfiguration of the intersection. They want to bring it out to bid this year or soon, actually. And start construction this year with the hopes of finishing this year as well. I have my doubts on that, and that's just because the, the complexity of the intersection. You know, it's like, it's not a, I don't think it's a ton of work. I mean, it's a fair bit, but you can't, you know, because of, because of what's, what all needs to happen and everything that's involved.
Redesigning the intersection may not sound like a big deal. It is actually a very complicated process because of the relocation of the utilities. You have to understand, you know, CMLP does not own all the utility poles in Concord. Verizon owns half Concord, CMLP owns half. And there's some significant coordination that happens because you have Verizon and Comcast on those poles. And everybody knows their favorite double pole where a new pole's been put in and there's this little stub still there. So the coordination that has to happen with Verizon and Comcast is, I believe the intention is to get rid of that little center island. That has that utility pole in it. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of coordination that's going to have to happen. So. But I will, I will get information and forward it to the board.
Will the work, whatever it is, if you pass, if you're coming up on Baker Avenue toward the project, the 40B project. You pass the two banks, you're on Baker Avenue. Is there anything that we know of scheduled to widen, improve, et cetera, Baker Avenue for that distance?
That I don't know.
Okay, we don't, we don't know. And the other thing that makes construction there a little bit tricky is that it's so heavily trafficked. Right? Then there's traffic coming. So it's not like you can just have a crew in there and do all the work. But you need, you know, everything you do there, you need police detail. And so. And so that's why I'm just hesitant to say that it's going to be finished this year. You know, I'm sure that stuff will, will go into it this year.
I guess I just have one last question, then maybe that was the appropriate time around construction traffic. You know, I know we've had some concern, you know, we can't force people to all turn left and go off route two for commuter traffic. But for construction traffic, I don't know if there's a sense that the applicant has that all of it can come in and out through. Route two versus any of it having to go through the Baker Avenue intersection.
The conversations we've already had, and as the board knows, as far as the standard condition regarding. A construction sequencing and safety plan. Those conversations that we've already had with the applicant. And it is their intention that construction traffic will be out through the site to Baker Ave. Extension to Route two. Yes, there will, there will be a, a gate at Baker Ave. But you know, in the conversation with the community safety officer and the fire department and engineering. You know, that may just be a, you know, an emergency gate with an ox, box and, and that. But the, the actual construction. Pattern that we've initially talked about is coming in off Baker Ave from Route two, coming into the site. And given the size of the trucks in the initial construction, they're more likely move behind 300 Baker Ave on the far side. So there's going to be, you know, a lot of work on the safety plan aspect of that. Because there are a lot of people that still will park in the back when they come in on the back. Or if somebody wants to go to the Hanger Cafe, which. But so there's still, so that's going to be, you know, a really good coordination conversation, but that is the intent.
And will it be in the conditions or?
Yes.
Will there be an updated landscape plan based on what you've shown us tonight?
Yes, there actually will. And there were a couple of landscape comments that actually came up during some of the working sessions that we didn't talk about tonight. But then have been trying to improve the landscape plan for some of the board's comments. Related to sidewalk locations, access at handicap accessible spaces. And more, a lot more detail on that.
Is the landscape plan addressing the wall on the far side of the incline?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that, I was at the last working session. And. Kevin and I, and I talked. Elizabeth's there as well about the wall. That's. Cause I, I'd also suggest that taking out two parking spaces there. The applicant now is resistant to do that because they added units there. So they need more parking there. So they're, they're just resisting now, which is, which I can totally understand, right? And so the. The wall was gone. They were looking at red rap and then, you know, just replacing it with some, with some red rap. But I think, you know, given the, the, the short height of the wall of, of that area, I think grass. Would just be fine. Landscape would be fine. It was like six, six feet, one to one is, is easily, easily maintainable. So that's, that, that was gone. And as Michelle just said, there were a couple of other little tweaks to, to the plans. Handicap accessibility aisles and sidewalk connection. That, that, that they were also making. So they're little, so little tweaks that I thought were going to be, in the end, are going to be very helpful.
Thank you.
And then, and through the chair, just, we had said previously that on the 22nd, I believe. We're intending to submit all of our updates. So that will include our civil, our architectural and then the landscape part as well.
Right. And, and that drawing set will then become deeper and accessible. Be, be set. So those were, well, I, I have, still have some small items or minor items that we potentially could, could discuss. But is there anything that the applicants want to discuss or any questions?
No, I just wanted to reiterate that it's already come up in response to a public comment that. I believe it's on the 22nd that we submitted a letter relative to the, the term. To confirm that, that area on 300 that we were converting that. We heard everybody and that's fine. There will not be artificial turf there.
Yeah, yeah. And just, just Ms. Gritt, on the, on the website for this project, there is a memo from Kevin Hurley that, that states that very clearly. Um, what uh, what is now being proposed. So that's, that's good. Um, so we're done under an hour. So I, I'm going to use a little bit more of the time since we're all here anyways. Um, and this is actually for the board. Um, one of the things that that came up and that I asked for it actually on the last hearing is the the local preference, what we want to do there. And I asked for some input from uh, from people and we actually got, I thought, got a fair amount, which was actually, I was, I was very pleased with that. Um, and they obviously run the gamut from no local preference to as much as we can get. Um, so I think it's, I don't know whether the board has any uh, any thoughts, uh, any thoughts staff on that or whether they read any of the letters. Um, the applicant already has stated that they are uh, willing to go to the max, which is seventy percent. Um, it is, uh, the local preference is an application that the town needs to do. Um, and Liz Rust will do that uh, for us. And it's an application to the state. The state might say that, that's, I don't like that. I don't like the percentage. So it's saying, that's sort of like the, the first hurdle. And then, and I think Judy Berry uh, uh, mentioned that last time that it's um, it's only at initial lease up that you get your local preference. And that it still then has to, uh, um, and I'm, I'm not having the, the, the correct words here, but it has to balance what the, the greater Boston area it has and and uh, so um, have you guys had any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I mean, I saw the letters. My impression was that kind of the weight of the comment leaned towards having it all local, having the max local preference versus not. Um, and I'm, I'm supportive of that. Uh, I think we will still have diversity if we do that, uh, which is, I think, one of the concerns that was raised.
Yeah.
So that, that's where I am.
Well, I, I kind of started going the other way. This is what I was trying to use Lex's AI pool, but it wasn't real helpful. Illegal AI. Trying to figure out pros and cons, but I mean, it, I guess in my mind it'd be great if we could have a policeman live there. If we're gonna have like, I'm not sure we get there. Right. Elizabeth's saying you don't get there and you can't be like, yeah. Yeah, um, it's correct. And I'm sure Judy um, can um, back me up on this. Um, no, your, your local preference um, does not get to be that specific, like, okay, only policemen, schoolteachers and um, it is, you know, the, the local preferences, you know, define somebody, you know, lives in the community, works in the community. Um, or
Has children in the schools.
Yes, um, and, and that's, and then it, and, and local preference and then income qualificat- qualification. So, um, but you know, a town employee um, is also considered, can be included in the local preference. So once you do that though, when you're saying it has to match the area, I don't understand diversity, income, how, then how does that, uh, in, how does that work exactly?
Yeah, Judy, Judy, you can, can give us an honorable mention because we're a bit dense, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always a little bit tricky to understand this, but there, you have to look at the composition of your local preference pool from the perspective of race, race and ethnicity. And if it is really out of alignment with the racial characteristics of the greater Boston area, then you have to conduct what's called the second lottery and it's a lottery process with the minority applicants who are in the general pool. The people who are not eligible for local preference. Um, and they are added to the local preference pool until you reach that racial parity with the region. So there will be people could be, I mean, I, you know, it depends on what the racial makeup is of the local preference pool. But if it is short of the makeup of the Boston area in terms of percentage, then you will be adding some people to the local preference pool from the general pool until you reach that racial parity.
So, so I think that's why, you know, the diversity comment in a way gets addressed because if we don't have enough diversity in the local preference.
That's correct.
Be put in there.
Right.
Anyway.
Anyway, that's right. That's the way it works.
So I, I mean, I just had a hard time finding arguments for either side because I think you mentioned that some communities had opted not to do it. And wasn't there a specific places that it said no? Maybe it was Judy who said this.
No, no, Stephanie mentioned it.
Oh, was it you? Sorry, someone.
Yeah, it was um, I believe it was Sherbrooke that, that opted against it. It, it might be incorrect, but.
No, I, I, that's true. That there are communities that don't, that don't require local preference.
What's the rationale?
Um, well, I think it varies. Some of it is not wanting to be an impediment to diversity in the region. Um, some of it is uh, sometimes a reality check that there may not be enough people, perhaps in a very wealthy community to, to meet the local preference. So why not open the door? Um, I think some people are, are just simply offended by the idea that you sort of get to pick who your neighbors are. So there's a variety of reasons, um, and people who support local preference see it differently.
Okay. Yeah, no, thanks. And so you're on the yes, as much as we can get local preference.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, my kid has a classmate in kindergarten who's uh, you know, dad is a firefighter in Concord and they, they live in Maynard. Maybe they do want to live in Concord and I think they should have the chance to.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I'm, it makes sense to me. I'm.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm I'm, I'm with Robbie at first, you know, I, I like suggestion of no local preference at all. I was all over that. Uh, just to, just to increase, in, increase the diversity, but given now that indeed it will be, it it will be, if I, if I understand Judy correctly, this, the, the, and this is the, the lease up pool of the the seventy percent of the fifty-one units will resemble racially the greater Boston area. Uh, which most, more, more than likely will be more racially diverse than Concord is currently.
The, the, the people in the lottery, the local preference lottery.
Yeah.
Would be roughly proportional to the Boston area um, demographics.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm fine. And it's, it's initial lease up. I mean, and then the state might say, yeah, we don't like your, your, your plan or just asking. So, um, yeah, I, I, I am indeed als- also leaning now towards full seventy percent. Get as much, increase the chances for firefighters and policemen as much as we can. Uh, that's, that really.
And we'd be talking about whatever the percentage, but take seventy would be seventy percent of the fifty-one units, correct?
Correct. That's local, that's local preference. The, the other thirty percent is, is this lottery, general lottery, which, which actually could also still be uh, con- uh, concordians hitting that.
Right.
Good. Um, I, I think, well, the only other thing, and I think we uh, we touched upon it very, very early on in the, the first meeting is that uh, the affordable units, they're going to be affordable in perpetuity, right? Did we discuss, right? That's, that's, yeah. I just wanted to refresh that one. Wow.
Right.
I, I told you it was going to be a quick meeting tonight. Uh, uh, that you kicked me. Let me say that.
We never say that out loud.
So I just want to give one more pass uh, on um, see whether there's anybody from the public uh, who wants to uh, wants to comment. Um, yes. I was, was hoping that you would raise your hand, Mr. Bergman. Can you, yeah. Keith, go ahead.
Hi, uh, th- thanks very much. Keith Bergman, uh, fifty-six White Avenue, uh, speaking as Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And I just wanted to report that the trust had an excellent meeting uh, with the representatives of uh, Novo and with Town Council and Town Staff uh, at five o'clock tonight. And the trust has uh, voted to uh, invite Novo to uh, submit an application uh, to us for funding uh, of three hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars to cover the sewer improvement fee for the uh, for the uh, based on eighty-nine bedrooms in the fifty-one units. Uh, and we would, uh, we're very pleased with the progress of uh, discussions between the town and Novo uh, to address issues that the trust had identified. And uh, so we have tentatively scheduled our next meeting uh, for two, uh, for uh, two weeks from now, from um, Tuesday, March twenty-sixth at five P M. Uh, at, at which uh, if, if we get a, a funding application from Novo, hopefully uh, well in advance of that date, we could uh, uh, take, take action on their funding application then and report it back to you before you close your public hearing.
That would be terrific. Thank you so much. Uh, Keith, that's, that's great news. And that would take care of one of the waivers already. So that's a we cross that up, off the list. So, good.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Eric Moore.
Uh, uh, thank you. Um, so I'm really appreciative of the progress that uh, both the Z B A and, and the applicant have been in this project and really, really, really feel very good about what I've heard tonight. So I appreciate everybody's work on that. Um, for a really small question or I guess a concern about traffic, which is that coming up from Main Street, crossing the railroad tracks and then turning left into the site. Um, I know that there's going to be a continuation of the sort of the barrier north of the tracks to, but I, I worry about, frankly, I just worry about getting stuck there, you know, getting stuck behind cars making the left turn. And so as folks are looking at traffic engineering around the site, I wonder if there is any space to consider a dedicated left turn lane uh, just above the tracks so that cars could go around as cars are turning. And also with that as well, and thinking about traffic coming in and out of the site, uh, I wonder as well if there will, will be a pass through from three hundred Baker and that the businesses and so on through the parking lot of, of the development and out into Baker Ave. And whether or not, not having a pass through would have any impact on traffic in and out of the site. So thank you. Oh, and forty-five, forty-five Francis Street, Concord, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. You stayed on point. So we, we gave one on thirty seconds. Um, Rand, Randy Hart, thank you for uh, for joining us and um, you can get to contribute. So uh, can you, can you answer the, uh, the question?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Randy Hart with B H B Traffic Consultant on the project. Um, so one of the things that we look at very closely is the operations of the um, driveway, the intersection and what we anticipate during the peak hours, which for residential development is seven and nine in the morning and four to six in the afternoon. And that's typically when people leave, go to work and come back. And that's so when, you know, the residential activity is at its highest, that's what the peak would be. And our analysis showed very clearly that the activity on Baker is such that um, you know, the left turns in, the delay, any delay that we see there, even during the peak hours is minimal. Um, you know, and so we don't anticipate any real backups there uh, at any time, particularly during the peak hour. So, you know, you know, one of the things we try not to do as traffic engineers is build more pavement that we need, whether it be for parking or lanes or whatever. Um, and so this is a perfect instance where, you know, it just didn't show that it was necessary. Um, so it really was not part of the consideration. And again, it's going to work well. Um, and I think uh, the peer consultant letter that uh, we got today and as you know, the chair is looking at and, and I'm looking at as well, um, said very clearly that they signed off on transportation. So if they saw that as an issue, they would have brought it up and they did not. So I think they're in agreement with us on that front.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Randy. And then, you know, I want to add to that, you know, you brought it up as well. Uh, it, it, um, earlier on, Randy, was that, you know, obviously the residential traffic leaves the site in the morning. Well, and, you know, so it's the co- it's the counter move that, that happens uh, on Baker, right? So while there is some more traffic, but it's, it, it will be going in a different direction. So I think that, that, that would help.
That's the beauty of this, this project, this location is its counter flow. You know, everybody comes into the office in the morning, they leave in the afternoon, but the residential leaves in the morning and comes back in the afternoon. So we're putting traffic on the less, you know, volume uh, movements during the critical periods.
Good, thank you. Pamela Britt, on the time.
Thank you. Just one more, two, two more quick questions. Are you still planning to um, lay conduit such that all the interior parking spaces can in the future have uh, electric vehicle charging? And? Oh, no?
Um, and so I'm working with the fire department um, to provide a comment letter to the board. Um, but the fire department is um, adamant that there be no E V charging. Um, I guess it's the second, the second under, was it the second floor underground parking? So only E V charging on the first floor near the um, entrances. Um, and then any E V charging they want outside.
That's why?
Um, they are not able to fight any um, of electric fire two floors underground.
Why? If they're able to fight a gasoline fire two floors underground?
Um, so.
Yeah, let's not, let's not get into this. This, this is a request from the fire department. Oh, no. Not, not actually a request from the fire department. It's an edict from the.
Yes, but, but we need our fire department updated. This is not possible to go on in the future. It's, it's wrong. It's like having lanterns being carried in front of cars when they were first introduced.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. I hear you, but we're not in a position to uh, to change the mind of the fire department here. So um, I'm, I'm.
We need to though.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
The, the other.
I'm glad that there is some electric uh, vehicle cha- charging below ground because there are some unisphers where that, that it can't even happen. Um, so I, I, I'm glad that there is some here. So I will hopefully do that. So.
Well, but the idea is that in residential housing, you need to have charging attached to the units themselves. Not commonly shared charging. But it's not.
I, 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 I know, but this, this is a fight with the fire department that I don't want to have. So.
I understand. One other question is there going to be um, battery backup and solar?
Shell, Kupri, there, there is, uh, we are committed to doing solar on both rooftops. Um, but we are not providing, we're going to provide the maximum array allowable without battery backup. Um, the Concord Municipal Light Plant has very specific requirements for those batteries. Um, and we, we can't commit to adding those at this time.
So.
Hmm. Need to update them too, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's a lot of work to be done.
Thank you.
Hey, thank, thank, thank you. Onorina, please. We're trying to um, update her.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I was just going to um, raise something that had been discussed before. I live at ten eleven Main Street. And I am, continue to be concerned about the increased traffic on Main Street and wondered if there was any further consideration given to um, a left turn only um, departure from the site uh, to, during certain times of the day to reduce the amount of traffic coming out of um, Baker Avenue onto Main Street. Uh, was something that was mentioned at a previous meeting and I just, you mentioned it for the construction, but not um, as part of the project and uh, traffic control itself. Thank you.
I'm trying to get Randy, uh, Randy, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, so um, I don't think we've really looked at restricting that left turn. Um, you know, what we see is anyone that is headed out to Route Two in a westerly or northerly direction would not even come out the site driveway. They come out the main corporate uh, access driveway uh, and go to Route Two directly. Um, the activity that we pushed out to Main Street was, I think, and, and going from memory here, but I think it was in the order of twenty to thirty percent of what our activity was, which I think it was in the order of twenty to thirty percent of what our activity was, which you know, translates into peak hour trips, I think, like ten or fifteen trips over the course of a sixty-minute period, so it was it was very minor in terms of volume, um, but we did not look at a restriction because we saw the trips be minor in that direction.
Okay, cool. Thank, uh, thanks, Randy. Um, and that's, and I I I just got um, a document, it's my question that I needed to ask Michelle, because we had some questions, we had a question from a specific neighbor. And um, I just wanted to address that in uh, in the meeting here, um, so that, you know, was, we don't have a paper trail going back and forth or or so, um, and that's, how is the garage exhaust being handled? How do you deal with that?
Yeah. Sorry to, sorry to interrupt, Taylor. Um, Taylor mentioned um, a little bit ago that there's a couple memos on the the Nova website on conquer.gov. There's a memo out there right now that's related to the garage ventilation systems and how they're gonna work technically. Um, but essentially, when we have the parking garages enclosed underground, it creates a risk for people in those spaces if carbon monoxide um, accumulates too high. So there are there's a, there's a system installed that is a series of sensors in the garage area that are interconnected to um, a loop system, which involves intake as well as exhaust fan. So if the carbon monoxide levels in the garage areas get too high, it triggers the the fan system to turn on. So the intake louvers, which are essentially non-mechanical, non-fan elements, um, turn on, allowing fresh air into the garage. And then the exhaust fan, which would be located on the roof of both projects, would move the garage, the air from the garage out through fire and shafts through the roof project. Both, um, all of that system, it's a little bit different for two ninety-two than it is for two ninety-four, uh, because two ninety-four is a single floor. Um, so at two ninety-four, the intake's actually gonna be managed through the garage door opening, which is, which is an open area, so we can use that for the intake, and it'll be exhausted up through fire-rated shafts through the roof. And then at two ninety-two, because we have two levels, um, the lower level, L two, will have two shafted elements up up to the highest level of the roof, one for fresh air intake and one for exhaust. And the distribution of those fans has to provide cross ventilation through the garage, so that no areas of the garage can become pockets um, of carbon monoxide. Um, that is the summary of how it works. It will be sized um, by a mechanical engineer who's not on the project yet, and it's sized per square footage of the garage.
But the other than vehicles parking there, there is nothing else that produces this C O and C O two, right?
That's correct. And so the the only air that's being moved are the cars that are driving in, turning off and being parked.
Yeah, so so like a regular parking area.
Regular parking, but it's actually, um, if you think about a parking area, somebody might start their car early to preheat it in the winter. That essentially doesn't happen in residential parking garages. Because we're buried underground, the garage actually probably won't drop below forty-five degrees, so your car's not gonna get cold. So there's actually less carbon emissions from a parking garage than there is from an equivalent surface parking lot. Um, because the cars stay warmer and people don't waste that energy on their fuel-related cars. The fans are also electric, so they themselves are not creating carbon emissions.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that explanation. Helpful. Um, with that, um, we would like to continue to the twenty-sixth of March. Um, twenty-second uh, March, we'll get an updated drawing set sometime before the twenty-sixth. We'll also get a, an updated waiver list, right? And then on the twenty-sixth, it's all virtual, all virtual. Um, we will go through conditions and waivers. Um, so um, Mina and Kristen have some work to do for that as well, writing uh, writing up the conditions uh, for that. And I know they're, they're already working on it. Um, and then we're right on track for uh, it is, you know, the April eleventh. So.
I need a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to March twenty-sixth at seven P M. We'll then continue the public hearing until March twenty-sixth at seven P M. Thank you.
One second. Hold on a favor.
Hi.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Oh, Lena, Lena. Sorry, Lena, um, let's. Hi, yeah, Lena?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, uh, and a a member of the select board and also a member of the um, Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, but uh, speaking for myself at this point. Um, earlier this afternoon, um, the trust met with Novo. Um, and Keith already gave a report about that. Another issue that we discussed, um, uh, Novo commented on the parking availability, um, the covered parking availability specifically, um, for um, that there would be a charge for all of those spaces. And um, I just want to comment that, uh, and again, we discussed this earlier, that um, equitable equity is important uh, for for the affordable housing units in terms of parking. And that is i- i- an important issue. Um, and so I would hope that um, the board would ask Novo to at least entertain that concept and um, provide some relief there. Thank you.
Thank, uh, thank you. Um, so we just closed public hearing, so we'll take that in as a, on the advisement, and we'll, we can discuss it uh, you know, on on our next on our next meeting, and then I think uh, definitely at some point, Novo uh, might uh, might have a response to that as well.